We're ready. Okay. I call this board meeting to order. All board members are present. We will begin with the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to move to add an addition to the agenda.
Okay.
Adding up 1.0 agriculture teacher under action item C. Let her see if we could.
Okay, perfect. So is there, Jason has a motion to amend the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn. Any further discussion? So this is a vote to approve adding this position to the agenda. So it's an amendment. So all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So is, so the motion carries. And then we'll, we just need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lynn. Second by Shannon. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The amended agenda is approved. Just help, if I zip past it, just help me. Comments and requests from visitors? Don't see any hands raised or anybody in the audience that isn't on the agenda. Let's see. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Shannon.
Second.
Second by Sunny. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The consent items are approved. Action item 6A approval of the payment to the Coltsburg Bakery.
Let's see. Make a motion to approve payment to the Coltsburg Bakery and amend.
Forty-seven, forty-nine.
Forty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents.
Motion by Jason. Second by Shannon. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Lynn abstains. The motion carries. Request of property use. The Hometown Committee has submitted a letter of request to use the school district property for the car show on Saturday, July 27, 2019. This is a request that we receive annually. Are there any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Sunny.
Second.
Second by Jennifer. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to abstain since I'm on the committee that's requesting that.
And Lynn abstains. All right. 6C. An item that we just, an action item that we just added. And it's a position recommendation for our consideration. And it's the recommendation coming from Mark Jensen to add a 1.0 egg teacher. Brad, do you want to give us an update?
Sure. So after our work session the last time, we went to work and met again with the egg people, the egg advisory group. And we have this recommendation in front of you tonight. Confident that this will not affect the budget in a negative way. And that we'll be ready to go starting the school year. We still do have, as always, things to work out. Space, those types of things. But confident that we'll make it be up there.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Motion by Sunny, second by Shannon. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The egg position is approved.
With that, with that action item being approved, we will begin our posting process tomorrow.
Wonderful. That's great. Thank you. Okay. Discussion items, policies. We have a number of policies that are due for review. They are first readings. Is there anything the policy committee wants to point out?
I want to point out that the meal charge is the, the meal charge policy is the second reading.
Oh, thank you.
The first five are first readings.
Yes, thank you.
Jason or Jennifer?
The, I guess I have a small question. I noticed what policy, some policies had a considerable amount of changes. I mean, I didn't have any questions on the changes, but I was just curious where that was coming from.
Yeah, most of that is coming from MSBA, like model policy that we've integrated into that.
Okay. Perfect.
The committee is basically taking a pretty deep dive into what MSBA has, what we have, and then crosswalking and adding it.
Okay.
Sunny's happy to not have to be on that committee.
So our policies aren't more detailed than theirs that, or, you know, conceptually more detailed?
We're trying to match what MSBA is and yet keep our Recore independence.
Yeah.
For example, the governing international studies students, that's not something you find in most, but we, it's part of our, what we've done.
Okay.
Can we do that on a committee report?
Yeah, okay. I'll do it at the end.
Okay, perfect.
I just didn't know.
Yeah. Section 8 Administrative and Board Reports. First up is the Budget Comparison Report, which Beth has included the information as well as explanations of any discrepancies. Anything you want to point out? Beth, that isn't already?
No, the explanations are there unless anybody has a question or anything.
Any questions? All right, pretty self-explanatory report. 8B Superintendent Report. We have a number of things to discuss. One, first up is enrollment. So our monthly enrollment report.
Yeah, so as the enrollment is attached. And it's always good when you're coming into mid-March, end of March, April, that your student count looks the same as it did when you started the year. So that helps making sure that your budget is going to be closer. So that's a very positive on enrollment. We are working daily on what enrollment will be for next year. And hope to have an update for you in the next work session as far as where we are in April. So these are the actual hard facts that you're seeing tonight. And then in our works, next work session, you'll see our projections again based off of what we currently have.
And basically summary of this month's data is that it's pretty much holding.
It's holding.
Yeah, which is great.
I have a question because the numbers have gone down quite a bit in January and went back up in February. Is there any reason? The one thing, and I don't know if it's happening with the school district. In the past, I've had some Hispanic employees that would take longer vacations and I wouldn't always know if they were coming back. I don't know if there's families that are, my employees tended to go back to Mexico with a plan of coming back. Sometimes they didn't. I don't know if that's something that skewed your numbers where those kids aren't here to count when January starts.
Yeah, that's been, that's been a factor, or could be a factor. I think one of the other factors you have too with January and February is usually typically January is either the end of the semester. For example, at, since we're on trimesters, the end of the semester in St. Cloud Schools or other, that happens usually in January. So if you're going to switch over at the end of the semester is another one of those possibilities. I don't know that to be true or not, but I know that's another factor.
It just seems like every year we go down in January and a lot of years of February jumps back up. And I was wondering if why that pattern seems to be there.
Couldn't tell you.
Okay.
It was, what was it, six students? Six students out of 2,100.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Kind of went back up to where it was in some places. Not always.
All right. Program update. So an update to the egg.
Yeah, so again, thank you to the, to the school board for providing the program. That's the update. I don't have anything further than thank you for your, for your work on that and listening to the community and putting back in a program for our students. The, the next item I had is the stakeholder survey. And as we talked tonight in the Teaching and Learning Committee, that that's in the works. There's, I'm working with two different peoples to try to help us develop that survey based off of what we took. Jason saw a group out of Wisconsin. And Albany just used a group. And so I've connected with Albany and we're going to see what best fits. But the idea behind this will be to not just look at the test score data, but also ask our community what it, what it is they want Recore graduates to be like when they leave us. We have, I've secured a page in the Community Ed brochure to make sure that all of our households will get the information of where they can go to get the survey, whether it be online or whether they could actually come in and do it by paper.
How many questions does the survey typically?
Hasn't been developed yet. We're, I need to, but typically it's anywhere from 10 to 15 minutes is the max that people want to have to spend on doing that.
Will they be sending out like a mailing to all the residents in the district? Or is it just that?
It will be, okay, so the company that we're working with, Wisconsin, it can be a combination. It gets a little more expensive to mail it out to everybody.
Okay.
So if we can use the Community Ed brochure to say, here's the website, here's a web link to go to, or here's the phone number for you to call for me to send you a mailing, we cut our costs down significantly that way and use our current resources. If we have to mail it out to everybody, it just goes up exponentially.
Is it an anonymous survey?
That's our, we have an option to do that. Typically, you, you want it to be anonymous, but you also will have them answer enough questions so that you can tell it's a student, what building they go to, their parent.
Some demographics.
Yep, some demographics. And when I say stakeholders, we're talking students, parents, community members, businesses.
Now, are most of these are going to be multiple choice or open-ended or?
Combination. The company I work with, I had not worked with the company, Albany used, but the, what the company is, is some of both.
Typically, with surveys, the most powerful piece is the comment section? Because that's where you find themes? That's where people name names if it's anonymous?
Yep, and we have to be willing to hear that. Similarly to what Stephanie Hillman went through when she surveyed the community about Spartan Spot. Some of those things were tough to, were tough to read, but we don't know if we don't ask. Any more questions on the stakeholder survey?
Last time we did a survey, we did ask them questions related to if we did some kind of referendum, what kind of tolerance was there for increases in taxes? Is anything going to be included on something like? Just in case we need the information.
That was a, that's a very good question. They asked me the same question, the company of Wisconsin. And my answer to them was, I'm not sure. So does, does the board want to give me direction to ask those questions? I certainly will put that in.
For sure. I mean, we're looking at buying this land and we've talked about this turf and on a regular basis and all these little functions I go to for the kids and athletics. It's always, you know, what are we going to do? Becker has this, and they have this, and they have this. So I think it would be nice to find out if it's just the parents that are involved in those things, that are really wanting to see us be more aggressive in our facilities? Or is it, you know, again, it's not just us. It could be the city and a combination of them. But yeah, I would be curious to find out what people really think about improving our facilities.
I don't think it ever hurts to find out tolerance levels of people that would either be supporting or not supporting.
Right, and I think, what would you use the dollars for? Right, so one vote taxpayer may be in favor of a referendum if the dollars are spent here. But if you're going to spend them here, then I'm voting no.
Right.
So I don't think it's just the open-ended question of the referendum or more about strongly disagree, strongly agree on the spectrum if we were to spend it in the arts, if we were to spend it in, you know, on more facilities or sports or whatever you have you. That's where I think that we get really interesting to see what the community actually would be willing to spend referendum dollars on.
The last time we did ask kind of levels, you know, it's like, would you be willing to deal with $50 more, $100 more, $200? Basically, we found out there were enough positives that said $100 towards education, they would deal with. Got to 200, the numbers fell off. So that helped us in developing a referendum that time around.
Beth, what's the number for the technology? That each household is in our, with our technology referendum?
Oh, it really varies. I think $150,000 home was like $9 or something. It's pretty low.
$9 a year.
Yeah.
And tell me again what that bought us, $9 a year bought us?
$250,000.
$250,000.
But I think that went forward with the fact that we refinanced a lot of our bonds. So it really was a negligible cost to the community because the building, you know, debt was now negotiated at a lower interest rate, which saved us $250,000. So now we're just spending that $250,000 differently. So.
And it passed by 86 votes.
Yeah.
So not a landslide.
You know, the other thing is depending on what happens to education funding, we might be looking at, if we get the 3% this year, we're probably okay. But 2% the following year, we might be in a situation of doing cuts if enrollment doesn't keep growing. And in fact, at the C-Day at the Capitol, there were other districts that were saying the same thing, that they're in that situation that if they either got a new referendum or they're coming in the 3%, they're okay this year. But everyone's saying next year, they're really concerned about it. We may need dollars just to keep what we have.
Yeah. It looks like clear consensus.
I think I have my answer.
Maybe I have a lot of material to offer.
No, it's a good, good conversation though. Okay, teaching and learning.
Tonight, just prior to this, this meeting, we had a Teaching and Learning Committee meeting, which we talked about four major areas. We talked world's best workforce. We talked about assessment. We talked about, what was Sam's other deal? Our achievement integration. And then we had Mary Holmberg present on our curriculum and instruction proposal for next year. And so I invited Mary to be here tonight to give the rest of the board a presentation on where we are headed next year for curriculum and instruction. And the reason again why I had Mary here tonight is because this is budget related. And I want the school board to see, and I want the community to see, where is their dollars going for when it comes to improving our curriculum and our instruction? So Mary, I'm going to turn it over to you to walk us through your PowerPoint.
Thanks for welcoming me here today. It's been an exciting year for us. So here we are, Curriculum and Instruction 2018-19. We're in cycle year two, which is curriculum selection and training. We have learned with great influence from Mr. Calvington that we always need to focus on our roadmap. And we know that our mission is to make a different study to create a better tomorrow. So everything that we do throughout the process goes back to how does everything relate to the strategic roadmap? This year, Science, World Languages, and Industrial Tech went through the curriculum review process. Bruce Hall represented Recore High School Science. Jamie Burner was Recore Middle Science. Joyce Baumann was our Elementary Science Chair. Deirdre represented World Languages. And Brian Hanging represented our Industrial Tech Department. So we were at a seven-year cycle a year and a half ago. And shortly in August of 2017, that became a six-year cycle. So we're working now to take the seven-year cycle and kind of collapse it into what works for six, a six-year cycle. So this is what we did this year. We researched our gap and need solution within our UBD units. We examined current research and those evidence-based practices that Mr. Calvington talked about. We did an assessment of needs. We reviewed our current practices and beliefs at Recore. That was mostly done through survey. We did curriculum development. So we looked at our standards alignment. We looked at assessment. And we knew what engaging instruction would look like. Our elementary schools felt strongly about the curriculum that they're proposing that the district purchased. So they've been piloting the free version online. Our middle school science department went to Big Lake and did a science visit with one of their top two curriculums that they were recommending. And then we looked very carefully at budget because we know that to meet the needs of our 21st or 22nd century learners, there needed to be a large investment in a variety of different areas from PD to materials to technology. So we worked really, really hard as a district team this year to meet the needs of our staff and our students by looking at those budgets. Recore Elementary Science is requesting Mystery Science. This is an online science program. It also involves summer hours to create kits. Obviously, when you're doing science, you want hands-on inquiry phenomenon-based practices. And if we were to purchase the kits, there'd be an extension in cost. But our staff felt strongly that within the walls and cupboards of our district, we've got all the materials that we'll need. So give us some time to just go through and reorganize from a former curriculum to the new curriculum. And we think that we can make this work. So that's what our elementary science team is requesting. Middle School Science is requesting online access to Amplify Science. Amplify Science is an online program that also involves hands-on kits, phenomenon-based, next-generation science standard aligned. The key part here is that they also had a textbook curriculum picked out. Amplify was their first choice. But if we're going to get Amplify, we need the technology to support that. So part of their request with their first choice was four laptop carts with counter storage. They did some site visits in Big Lake and found that we don't need carts. What we need is the counter storage pieces so that we can keep our devices charged. And then they needed four new iPads with portable storage because those are what the teacher uses. When the instruction's going on, the teacher can then remotely control what's going on on the smart board as well as what the kids are seeing on their screen. Because we worked together with all the departments in the district, we were able to ensure that if we went with Amplify Science, we would get those laptop carts and the iPads. So it was a package deal and we made it work. So we're super excited about that. And then we found out that Amplify Science is rated number one on Ed Reports. It's an online program that does research for all different kinds of curricular areas. And Amplify Science was number one. So we're really, really excited that our research paid off. Recore High School, a variety, a variety, variety of things that was requested by our high school department. Two laptop carts with printers. They had a printer from a previous purchase year, but it didn't have, or they had a cart from a previous purchase year, but it didn't have a printer. So they felt the need to enhance their stock by one more printer. We were able to get new chemistry, HMH textbooks. That's the Modern Chemistry book. So again, first choice is new chemistry books. They did have a second choice, which meant replacing current, currently used textbooks that had a 2010 copyright. But we were able to make this one work. They've also requested some science curriculum summertime to update and implement the new curriculum, so to learn about that. If you see things like PLC, those are professional learning communities. Those committees meet once a week. They meet every Thursday. And it's tied into Q Comp dollars. So when they're requesting summer work time through their PLC, that's funded through Q Comp. So again, we're reaching out and not just taking on the curriculum instruction budget, but we're finding other ways to source our needs. They would like college chemistry textbook. The picture on the bottom right is the Dynamic Cart and Track Systems that they would like to purchase for physics and physical science. And then we did have the Miller and Levine Biology Textbooks with the 2010 copyright. They looked at the newer version and said there wasn't enough change to make it worth purchasing a new book. And then the Physical Science McGraw-Hill textbooks. So World Languages requested some supplemental videos. They're working on writing their own curriculum. If you're interested, I can share a sample document that they have for their Spanish 1 and 2 classes. It includes the UBD unit, the curriculum mapping, all of the things that any teacher walking into that course would need to hit the floor running. They would like curriculum writing hours for 2019. It's a PLC for them this year. So they're also able to tap into those hours as well as staff development moving forward. Industrial Tech is a really exciting area for us as well this year. Through working with our, again, all those different committees, we were able to pull together a bid that included two VEX V5 Super Classroom Kits, the classroom competition field. So if you've been paying attention to the VEX robotics that the Recore District has just been rocking lately, this is a very similar purchase, but it's made just for classroom use. So none of the materials will get confused. But we really feel like if we can offer this kind of course to our middle school kiddos and our early high school kiddos, it'll pique that interest in the robotics and coding and all those kind of things. They requested a 3D demo printer. That's the bottom right-hand one. They said that they would plan to use that as well with our art teachers, do some cross-curricular teaching and get our kids, you know, in that field as well. They requested an electronic lab, a laser engraver, and a CNC plasma table. This team worked really, really hard to do the research on what is best in schools because of course there are many, many, many different products and companies with all of these things. And they came up with the best fit for Recore schools. Super proud of them. So what does that mean for our budget? There it is. Okay, so the very first column on the left is the department, which we just went through. CI budget would be our curriculum and instruction budget. SD is staff development. Then you can see the technology budget. And then you can see the Q Comp dollars. So the bottom chart gives us the department and the total of $223,491.34. The wonderful thing is that if it were just the curriculum instruction budget, we wouldn't have been able to meet the needs of our teachers and our kiddos. But by working with all of the different curriculum and all of the different departments within Recore, we were really able to do what's best for kids and I think meet the needs of our public that our stakeholders were requesting moving forward. So we're excited where we've been and we're excited where we're going. Do you have any questions? I went through that pretty fast.
Again, to, just to go back, why we're doing this presentation tonight is, you know, we don't improve things on a one-meeting basis. So I wanted you to be able to see the information, what we're planning on going forward with. If there's any questions, please reach out to me or Mary. Mary has just a tremendous amount of knowledge in this. She's worked extremely hard with companies to negotiate with them. And also done a really nice job of getting our teams to collaborate with each other. And it takes, it takes a heck of a leader to do those types of things. So Mary, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Looking to the future, next year we'll be looking at curriculum for FIAD, Health, Visual Arts, Music, and Media. They're currently being tasked with looking at their UBD units and their curriculum documents to see what gaps we have and what we need moving forward. So that'll go through this whole process next year. And finally, a thank you to the team. Allison Lai is our K-12, or our 612 rep. Joyce Baumann is our K-5 rep. And Kaylee Ungloom is our assistant in the office. So none of this would be possible without those three as well.
Can you go back two slides?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to point something out. So part of, a huge, actually the majority portion of this budget, it appears, is coming from tech. Is that accurate? And that has to do with our technology referendum dollars?
Yeah, and a lot of it also has to do with, pardon me if I'm wrong. Mr. Mikowski has a list of carts and devices within the district that are needing to be recycled just because they're aging out. So we were able to combine some of that and prioritize as the curricular needs move forward and replace that way. So like the four iPads that our middle school science teachers requested, those were on the list to be replaced anyway. Okay, it just kind of, we just, let's just work together, right? And make it as smooth as we can.
I think one of the things too that the board should know and how Mary helped us approve, how these teams approached it, we didn't just say, there's going to be $8 per student to spend. That's, that's not how we did it. That's, that's not how we did it. We asked the teams to tell us what they needed. And then, once we had that, then we went back and got all of these pieces to work together to come up with what you're seeing tonight. So, it wasn't about allotting a certain amount of dollars and then you have to fit what you want into that. It was the approach of, what is it that you need? What is it that your students need? And how can we work to get that? It's just a little bit of a change in philosophy and work that Mary did to get the teams together.
That's great. Any more questions? Yeah, thank you for your work.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Very exciting. So, moving forward then, we will bring these purchases for your approval, and then we'll go ahead and make those purchases and talk to our companies about filling up, bailing up for us and getting ahead and try to get some of this curriculum here so that our teachers can start their summer work with it.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay. Board Committee and Representative Reports. Before we go through our own reports, I just want to point out that, believe it or not, it's already time to start the superintendent evaluation process. So, I just wanted to give this board a heads up that in the next couple of weeks, I will be sending out the 360 portion of the evaluations to all of Mr. Calpington's direct reports, and that begins, that is kind of the first stage of the substantive portion of the evaluation. So, we will start to see things coming forward with that from our perspective as well. All right, let's go into Board Reports. Jennifer?
So, I went to the Technology Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, and much of what Mary had stated actually were, was topics that were approved at that meeting. So, the plasma, you'll see in the notes, there was the plasma cutter. I'm trying to find it here. Oh. Why do I not see it? Anyway, so, some of the purchases that she mentioned there, the plasma cutter, the Dremel, 3D printer came up as well, and the VEX robotics, I'm just going off memory. And the VEX robotics were all approved at that meeting. It was an unanimous vote. A couple of other things that came up and were decided on were to issue a Bright Byte survey for both students and parents, starting from sixth grade, I think, and then we're going to have decided to add in 12th grade, just to kind of understand what they think or what their opinions are on technology needs for 21st century students. Some of you may have received it. I know I've received it and...
I had a question about that because I got two surveys. So, I didn't know if I, because I had a kid in middle school and high school, then you get two.
I got two. I think it was just sent twice.
Oh, okay.
Does everybody else get two? I got two as well.
I know I got one. I don't know if I got two.
I thought I got one, but...
Anyways, I'll update you this week on that.
Yeah, so I just deleted one.
Yeah, I just did one too.
I just figured it was an automation error. It happens all the time. So, that was sent out, and then, let's see, discussion on blocking Netflix. So, apparently, that's, most of the school districts in our area do not allow access to Netflix. You just block it through your, you know, your web filtering solution, whatever you have. And so, it's really more about the communication to the students and, and community here about, hey, we're not going to allow Netflix, and here's why. You can read more detail on that, but it's really about, you know, there's some copyright infringement concerns, that it's really not, it's a home-based solution. It's not an enterprise solution, and so, it needs to be used. It's just being used improperly, I guess.
So, I just need to caution the board that when you hear that we're going to block Netflix, we can block it through our own filter.
Yeah.
But I cannot block it through your cellular data.
Correct.
If you click off the Wi-Fi, now you're on Jason Wiesenberg's own cell data, and you pull up Netflix, we cannot block that.
Yep. Yep, so it would just be blocked at the school, allowing the using of Wi-Fi filters. Another item that came up was a single sign-on portal called Clever, and we have a number, it was unclear how many applications you can use in Clever, but apparently, we have a number of them. So, you sign in once, and then it kind of gives you an app store almost, or one kind of a single pane of class where you can click on different things. It is a free solution, but it does require adoption. It does require training, so nothing is really ever free. And then, yeah, that was basically the gist of the meeting.
Okay. My committees that I'm supposed to report on haven't met, but we haven't, I don't think we've selected a designate for facilities and grounds yet to report on.
Yeah, I need to be able to gather that up tight if I could.
Oh.
Brad, make sure you get, who's going to be reporting on this committee?
Okay, well, let's, how about we, let's get through the, well, I suppose we need to figure it out, who's reporting on what. Okay, we got to that first. Okay.
I kind of liked mine.
Okay.
I wasn't reporting on any. It was kind of nice.
Do you want policy? Or do you want me to do policy?
Yeah, you can do that.
Okay.
Jason will do policy. Who wants to do facilities and grounds?
Okay, I will.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, Shannon will do facilities and grounds.
Big Shannon.
Transportation, is anybody reporting on transportation? Who wants to report on transportation?
I can do it.
Okay.
I've never been to a meeting yet, but...
I think we've only had one.
Oh, we are.
We had one.
What was that?
You were there.
Oh.
I was not.
I can report on transportation.
I got Sunny already.
Oh, perfect, okay, Sunny, oh, that's right, Sunny took that one. Finance, Finance is a board. Negotiations, we need somebody to report on.
I'll report on that.
All right. Lynn will report on negotiations slash personnel. Raccory Proud wants to do that one. Lynn, Sunny.
I can.
Shannon will. Teaching and learning, Sunny's the only, oh, no, Sunny and Jennifer are both on that.
And Jason.
Oh, and Jason. Who wants to report on that?
I can report on it.
Needs twice a year, right?
Three, three, yep.
I think that covers it.
Meet and confer.
Oh, meet and confer, thank you.
I can do that one, yeah.
Okay.
And fifth Monday.
Oh, fifth Monday.
There's two of us.
I can report on that. All right, perfect.
Thank you.
Okay. So, my committees haven't met that. Sunny.
Well, Brad did the teaching and learning update from the meeting this morning, so I won't restate that, and I've not been at a transportation meeting.
Oh, okay, perfect. We haven't had one since we reported. Okay, Shannon?
So, facilities and grounds, we did meet, and Brent updated us, updated us on some of the things that are going on with repairs for the summer. And then, we talked about how we were going to look at breaking up the, well, approaching the whole land potential with the land that's north of us here and what we're going to do with the DF land. And so, we had a couple of different shots of how that land on there could be maybe broken up. We talked about some strategies on maybe being able to work to a number that's a little bit more workable for us, I think. I don't know if you put that together or Brent did, but just kind of laid out what we probably would need to spend and what we'd be able to afford and kind of how it would work into the budget if it was something we're going to do. I think, right now, and Brad, you correct me if you're wrong, it's really trying to find out who the players are, the assumption, figure out what maybe folks are willing to do. I think we talked about contacting whoever's listing folks' property and find out if he has any leverage there. I mean, there's lots of talk in the community about, you know, that it is for sale, and I did hear yesterday that Bockis' land, and someone, if anybody knows, is going to be potentially, maybe, and this could be rumor, but that's on the other side of Highway 50 for sale, which I think would be a positive because it would show that that land is overpriced. So, you know, we might have, you know, again, I have no idea that we're not.
I'm just projecting here, but why don't we just make an offer of what we can afford? Why don't we just make an offer?
Because they wouldn't even, it's at $20,000 right now.
An acre.
Yeah, I know, but getting it paper and letting, letting that...
We did a while back.
Okay.
We got the first right of refusal. It's kind of where, you know, instead of getting nothing, that's what we do have. So, at this point, they pretty much said, "Well, we want double what you might want to pay," so we're going to just wait and see what we get. So, I mean, that's been done. But I think that the bigger part is we have to figure out what we're going to do with land DF, because it doesn't matter if they sell it for what we can. We can't do it unless we...
Yeah, right. You've got to deal with that other piece first, for sure.
So, it's really just work in progress and trying to determine how that strategy's going to work and trying to figure out what pieces we could let go of, and if we do, will the D or the assumption be willing to let us use the parks long enough to replace the parks up there, and are they willing to help us pay for them? So, I think there's, there's a lot that we've been talking about. I don't know, does, does anybody that was there have anything to add?
I think you covered.
Yeah, just an update on projects that are going on around the district between parking lots, roofs. And then, the exciting one is the theater, and just the upgrades to the theater. It's just part of our regular upgrades, so that's an exciting one for the community.
The roof projects are definitely needed. They've been tested early and often with the, with the snow and the melt, and so, I think the LTFM projects on roofs was a wise decision on the district's behalf to tackle, especially after what we're witnessing with this spring.
All right. Lynn? Okay. Oh, wait, Shannon, were you done?
Yeah, Busco meets on April 1st, which I will go to that meeting, so I know we talked about kind of handing it off, but I'm planning on going to that.
Okay, perfect. Lynn?
Okay, the only thing that has, well, didn't really meet, but C had the day at the Capitol, and it was a really good day. We met with five different legislators, including the Assistant Minority Leader at the Senate, Capitol Committee Chairs, our two local legislators, and one of the legislators that represents the Melrose and Alden, since they were also there with us. And for the most part, there's quite a bit of support out there for the education funding, but I will say that some of the senators were not willing to agree that the governor's proposal is doable because they're holding out because they're not happy with his proposal to increase the gas tax. So, it's going to be a little bit of a game down there. And what was a little disturbing to hear was from the Assistant Minority Leader at the Senate, who's been there quite a while, who was hoping that things would go smoothly. She just doesn't feel like the session is moving along as smooth as she expected, and she thinks we might end up going into, you know, not getting done by the deadline and having to go into special session in order to get final numbers, which I hate hearing that at this point, you know, because there's still quite a bit of time left within the session, but she said she just wasn't hopeful that negotiations on some of the big ticket items were going to go as smoothly as she had hoped originally. So, we'll see.
Okay. Great. Jason?
Yes, Ben Sterns. We met last Wednesday. He had a due process night here at Raccory where 15 people had signed up and 13 went, which is phenomenal because we've had zero attendees to the due process over in Sartell for many years, I think. Maybe one intermittently. I think we've had maybe one person, but it's been a while. So, kudos to them for changing their approach and being available to come out to help our staff and what she found out, something about the computers. Was it, I don't know.
A number of our teachers don't have laptops, so for them to, to actually go to Sartell without their own device is difficult. Because none of our teachers have desktops.
Laptops, they have desktops.
We have, we have desktops, so to go to Sartell, there wouldn't be a computer for them anyways because they don't have the desktops to access.
Right. So, that was one thing that was sort of discovered in the midst of this, which was interesting.
Was that night offered only to Raccory teachers or were other districts divided?
We did all around to holding Fordham Kimball.
And of the 13, how many?
They were all Raccory.
Oh, good.
Yep. Let's see, she was just doing some different caseload comparative data, so as far as how many teachers we have to our special ed demand, so we seem to be right there. There wasn't anything that was really outstanding with that. And then, they're looking at maybe some potential needs, and there's just more discussion as far as the budget going forward, as far as positions and such, and just trying to see what, what other districts are, you know, having for needs and levels of staffing and making sure that, you know, this is something that's a need versus a want type thing, so...
Superintendent's are meeting tomorrow at 7:30 in Sartell to have more discussion on that, on the positions and budget for next year. I'm worried it'll start early tomorrow in Sartell.
So, at some point, would it make sense to put all of those specialized people on laptops so that they have some flexibility to participate in, or is that...
I would argue that that would be something that all teachers would benefit from.
Yeah.
But yes, let me answer that question is yes. I believe it would be advantageous for our special ed teachers to need our laptop, but I would say that all teachers would benefit from that as well.
Speaking of that, what, I mean, should say this, in 1997, we all had laptops at the high school I taught at. So, where are the rest of the districts at throughout the state? I mean, where, where would you say, is it 50/50? Is it rural, not so much? I'm guessing...
I would say that more of the districts are one-to-one. They are more laptop-heavy. I would say the districts that are like us, that are doing a combination, probably bring your own versus in some, are more desktop.
What are you referring to?
I'm saying if the students, if the student base is one-to-one, you're going to find a one-to, you're going to find a laptop with the teachers. If you don't see one-to-one, you're going to see a mix of laptops or desktops.
So...
Don't have a good answer for you, Shannon.
Are we, so, I'm assuming that our replacement plan now is that we replace desktops with laptops? We're not replacing desktops with desktops anymore?
I haven't been to the Technology Committee meeting.
It didn't come up. I can ask.
But I guess, I don't know, I don't, I don't know that I like comparing, and I think you're just trying to say that there's a comparison between whether the teachers have laptops or the one-to-one. I mean, I think regardless of whether we're one-to-one, I guess, I wasn't necessarily aware that we didn't. I mean, and maybe that's because I was just being naive because everywhere I taught previous to here, we did. Is that ever anything that has come up in any of the...
Not while I've been here, it hasn't, but I'll, I'll check into it.
I mean, maybe it's something that's not coming.
I would just like to know what our replacement plan is and I would hope, yeah.
Our faculty strategy, probably?
Yeah, and have we, have we made the conscious decision to begin replacing with laptops and not doing desktops any longer?
I'm going back to the surveys we're doing. I hope we're asking parents and community members about going one-to-one versus the present technology plan.
That wasn't the Bright Byte survey.
Okay, because I'm hearing from community members that are concerned about it.
Concerned that we would go to a one-to-one or...
That we are there.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Policy Committee, choose one.
Yes, Policy Committee. So, I am, a sample, it just so happened, we were talking about the cell phone, you know, discussion as far as cell phone management strategy, and Mr. Jensen had said that they had purchased these over-the-door hangers, something similar to this with numbers and that, so each classroom would have it. I think prior to that, it was sort of elective, like if you wanted it, you could have it, but it wasn't really available to everybody unless it was asked for. And now, it's just going to be sort of a part of the classroom for each classroom to have that available. And so, that actually, from what my kids said, is that they have been in the classroom already, which I, from the meeting, I sort of thought there was going to be more discussion and then maybe integrate that, but it's great that if we've already purchased it, it makes sense to use it. But I think the discussion that will still continue will be, you know, with the students and administration as far as how that's going to be presented in the student handbook next year as far as cell phone usage and things like that. So, there, there's more to come on that, but so, that's where I think we're at.
I guess my question would be, we've talked about this a couple of times, having been through coaching and teaching and along with Brad and anybody else in this room, if it doesn't start at the top and work to really lead everybody to where you want them to go and then make sure that there's a clear-cut direction of what the expectation is and that all teachers are going to follow what the expectation is, it doesn't help the younger teachers that we're trying to help. You know, it doesn't give them... You know, it doesn't give them, "This is what we do. When you show up to class, I need you to put your phone in this particular hanging bag where you can see your phone. Your phone is, you know, it's in a place where no one's gonna mess with your phone." But if that isn't directed to all of them, then there's gonna be some renegades out there that are gonna say, "I don't need to do that. I've got my other, I've got control of it a certain way." And I just feel like it won't be as effective. Because if kids expect it to be a certain way, it's all about habits. I mean, you do it at home with your kids every day. You try to teach them good habits. And if they have this habit, it's gonna help the teacher that struggles with making sure that the phones are not being used inappropriately when they're not, you know, supposed to be using them. And if it's something that everybody does, then you deal with the kids and the parents that feel like that is completely, you know, not fair. Because there probably will be a few parents that will say, "You can't pay my kid hanging his, you know, phone up on that door." You deal with those people and you explain to them that this is about creating a positive, you know, atmosphere for all of our kids. That would be my only concern, is if that message is not delivered back to Jason saying, you know, through the handbook and what our expectations are from board, from superintendent, down to our principals and our administrators, buying into what our plan is gonna be to try to make our classrooms a more productive place when we don't need that device. Because again, I had kids that were in classes that had to deal with whether somebody's taking a picture of their test, whether somebody was taking a picture of their homework, whether they were copying their lab. And the kids shouldn't have to worry about that happening and then being caught up in it because someone else used that phone. So...
And I guess for me, the other part of that is helping our kids be successful in understanding what the expectation is so that they don't have to go into a classroom and be like, "Okay, what does this teacher think is okay? What do I have to do with my phone when I'm in this classroom?" And then they go to their next hour and they have to remember, "Okay, now this teacher allows this. Now this teacher says I have to do that." I mean, if we can have some sort of consistent standard that our students know what to expect so that they don't have to be worried about, "Oh crap, that's right, this teacher..." And they can be focused on the lesson and what they're there to learn.
Yeah, and that's what that was for, to be a tool to help create that.
This is the start to that. So, but, I mean, I agree. I think, you know, we talked a little bit about having a consistent message that goes out to the staff and the students so that it's clear as far as how this is a resource for teachers to use. And, you know, that's how it is going forward. So, how that message is communicated is key to be consistent. Because otherwise, if someone says, "Oh yeah, we got this," whatever, and if somebody says, "Well, we've got this, and this, and this, and, you know, this is how it works," you know, that's a much different message. So, what that all entails, I think, is yet to be, you know...
But yeah, I don't want to leave it unsaid what he just said. If we don't have a message of clarity to what we want as a plan, it doesn't matter what you give them. Because Mr. Jensen made it very clear, they've already had those and they don't, they don't use them. Teachers don't use them.
We just distributed them.
They had some previously, because we talked about this a couple of years ago, because the ACL, or the, is it AC?
ALC.
ALC has them and uses them. And that was the comment that we got, was, "Well, we, teachers don't want them. They don't, they don't use them." And I just wanna make sure if we spent the money to put them all in the classrooms, that we have a clear directive of how we feel as a school district, we want them to be used.
Oh, I have a question. Is cellphone use in the classroom actually even a problem?
Yes.
Oh, ridiculous.
And I'm saying that from...
Our parents, I mean, I got...
From my children.
I mean, you guys, I mean, it's...
How hard we quantify that it's a problem? I just wanna make sure we're solving a problem.
Right, so, and we had student council members sitting here agreeing. When students are distracted by other students, so, it's probably fourfold, right? Students are distracting themselves by being on their devices during teaching time. Other students around them are distracted because students next to them are on devices. And then, I've, I've had my own child who's been distracted trying to figure out what's okay, where is she supposed to have her cellphone? Can she have it with her? Does she need to leave it in a locker? Does she need to leave it in a backpack? Can she have it on the desk? Does it have to be under a piece of paper? You know, because everybody does it different. And so that's a distraction, just even if they're not on it. Just trying to remember what they're supposed to do with it. So, I do believe it's a distraction. I've heard it not just from my own kids, I've heard it from other kids. We've heard it from the student council. There's no consistency.
I think, I think it's a good start. So, and I think it's gonna be a work in progress. But I, you know, I think, you know, what Shannon has said and what I've alluded to, I think, you know, we gotta make sure we're crystal clear on, you know, that communication piece and what's gonna happen so that it's being utilized consistently so that it's readily used and without that being a distraction.
Okay, thanks for that tip. Okay, that, and then we have a bunch of different notes from different committees, which you can read for your enjoyment. Upcoming events. Is there anything you want to point out, Brad?
Reminder of the Personnel Meeting Wednesday night, 5:30. That will be right here in the boardroom.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Motion by Sunny, second by Shannon. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the meeting is adjourned.